There are no changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second, adopt the agenda, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Need approval of minutes for September 24th, 2015. If there's any changes, additions, or corrections, let me know. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Okay. Motion second, approve the minutes of September 24th, 2015. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Nashville Next update.
Greg Claxton with your -- with the Metro Planning Department with your Nashville Next update. I've got a brief update on the state of the plan itself. I'm very excited to say that we have completed all of our kind of final editing and corrections and map updates in the plan document itself. We were able to deliver it to Metro Council on September 1st. We also posted it online that week. And I'm going to walk through the state of the website a little bit because that's how most people are going to interact with it from here on out. First, we're using the front page of the Nashville Next website to provide updates on implementation, small little progress reports and kind of ongoing efforts as we go through them. Next, we'll have a page dedicated to the plan itself to access the different parts of it, and then provide a link between Volume Three, the communities, and kind of where those live elsewhere on our webpage. Third, we are planning to keep all of the background reports and research that was conducted for Nashville Next on the website. We think that those continue to be a great resource for the community. And last, we want to continue to have a presence on explaining how the plan was created, about the process. Even now, we're continuing to get requests from the public, people who are, you know, it's still new to them, interested to know what the plan says and how we developed it. I'm going to shift gears a little bit to talk about some other activities that we've been doing to begin implementation. These are grants that we've begun pursuing. I want to be clear that these are all either applied for or in the application process. None of them have been awarded yet, but it gives you a little bit of a sense of how we're setting out to begin implementation. First is a project for improving health and livability in Antioch. This is something that we're -- we submitted over the summer with the Health Department in partnership with the Crossings Nashville Election Partnership to create a health and livability committee within that group and to expand that group's reach within the community down in Antioch. The idea would be to identify key health improvements so that we build on the investments that have already been made in that area. You'll recall that's a key part of our center strategy, is tying together the things that Metro is already doing in a more cohesive and coordinated fashion. I would note that this is -- the area that we're talking about is a Tier One Center, so we're kind of pursuing that part of the growth and preservation concept map. Next, a similar project to develop an urban magnet in South Nashville. This is a grant through the National Endowment for the Arts, a program called R-Town. This is something that we're preparing to submit on our behalf, as well as in partnership with a local arts nonprofit called Seed Space. That's kind of how the grant is structured, is to get arts organizations and governments partnering. The idea would be to create a more detailed district plan for Wedgewood, Houston, and Chestnut Hill and the area around them, focusing on affordability for homes, but also affordability for employment areas. In particular, we're focusing on maker spaces, artisan manufacturing, and light industrial. And we want to kind of investigate and get a better understanding of both the market for those areas, since they do have very, very low rents, as well as how they can integrate with one another for the maker spaces and the light industrial, as well as getting a better feel for compatibility issues with residences. One of the -- our ongoing concerns is that we have a fairly finite amount of industrial space in the county that continues to see pressure to redevelop. So we want to see what kind of win-win opportunities we could have for both new residences and maintaining that job base. And again, this is part of a Tier One Center. The next is a transportation alternatives grant through TDOT. Parks and Greenways is actually -- is actually working on submitting this. It would extend the greenway up to Opry Mills. One of the nice things about this is that under the rubric of Nashville Next, under, you know, with that, you know, kind of the plan as a framework, we were able to bring several different departments together to consider different projects for this grant. We talked through several different ones from different departments, and ultimately unanimously concluded that this greenway connector was the best project for this grant at this time. So we kind of, you know, really had a nice moment of interdepartmental cooperation and discussion, and looking through what everyone was working on at the time. Last, we have a proposed pedestrian promenade in Green Hills. This is something that actually comes out of the 2011 Green Hills Area Transportation Plan. There's a grant from the Project for Public Spaces that we think would be a good match for this. So we've begun working with some of the property owners along Bandiwood and the Hill Center to discuss making this connection. Right now, that plan showed one particular connection, but we've identified three alternatives that we'd use, kind of the grant period, to work through. One of the nice things about this is that it's, you know, obviously focused on creating a nice pedestrian amenity, but it also gives us kind of a low-key setting for talking through parking issues in Green Hills, and in particular, the shift from parking as something that is owned by each property owner to something that's more of a shared model, where different property owners, you know, may, you know, will figure out some mechanism for sharing their parking so that people can park once and walk around, and so that you don't have traffic trips getting out onto each street every time you need to go to a different store. That's just a little bit of what we've been working on, but it was something we hadn't gone into much with you, so we wanted to let you know about it. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Will I have any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
Yes, there are a few items to be deferred or withdrawn, starting with item number one, case 2015 SP-088-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 and CS to SP zoning for property located at 101 Fern Avenue to permit up to nine residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item seven. This is the amendment to the rules and procedures of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Staff recommendation is to withdraw this item. And the last item is number nine, the election to fill the vacant executive committee position. That would be deferred to October 22nd.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard item number one to be deferred till October 22nd, item seven to be withdrawn, and item number nine to be deferred till October 22nd. Is there a motion to -- motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Items on consent, Bill.
Yes, before I get to the consent items, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read these items out loud, just raise your hand if you'd like one of them taken off the consent agenda. Starting with item number two on page four of your agenda, case number 2015 SP-091-001. This is a request to rezone from RS6 to SP zoning for property located at 1511 61st Avenue North to permit up to two residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item four, case 2015 Z-081 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS10 to CS zoning for property located at 329 Homestead Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item six, case 155-74P-008. This is a request to revise a portion of the Larchwood Commercial Putt Overlay District and for final site plan approval for property located at 3234 Blackwood Drive to permit a 9,100 square foot retail facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And then, under Other Business on page five of the agenda, certification of the bonus height compliance for 222 Second Avenue South. Staff recommends approval. And item 13 is to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Do you agree with what we're talking about?
So that would be item two, four, six, eight, and 13 are on the consent agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, before we vote on those, Council Lady Roberts is in the room. Would you like to speak on item number two? That's going to be on consent. Do you have any comments on it?
Check this time, I do not.
Okay. Commissioners, items two, four, six, eight, and 13 have been requested to be on consent.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So the items that will be heard on public hearing today is item number three, which is Crowley Homes, and item number five, which is Lewis Street. We're ready for item number three. Council Lady Roberts, it's practice if you'd like to speak before the presentation, you may, or if you want to wait till after presentation.
Can you talk -- do you ask her to be -- I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if you come.
I'd like to speak after.
What's your -- okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, item number three is a request to rezone for property located at 630 Crowley Drive to permit up to 13 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The property is approximately .95 acres in size. It's currently zoned CS on the front here and RS6 on the rear. The plan as proposed has 13 residential units, nine attached and four detached. There are seven residential units located here, or I'm sorry, six residential units located here along Crowley Drive. These three are attached, and then the four remaining are detached units. Sidewalks are being proposed along Crowley Drive, and internal sidewalks are also proposed to connect the residential units to the new sidewalks along Crowley Drive. Parking is provided in a combination of garages and surface parking located here behind the units and here. The developer has proposed certain architectural standards in regards to the glazing of the units, vertical orientation of the windows, prohibited materials, as well as raised foundations for all residential units. The current policy for the area is T4 Urban Neighborhood Center. Urban Neighborhood Center policy is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban neighborhood centers that fit with the general character of urban neighborhoods. These areas are pedestrian-friendly, located, and generally located at intersections of urban streets. The proposed residential uses enhance the overall neighborhood center for future and for future commercial and residential uses. The plan supports two critical planning goals. It's supporting infill development on an existing urban lot and in helping to create a walkable neighborhood by providing for sidewalks along Crowley Drive. Because the plan is consistent with the Neighborhood Center policy and meets two critical planning goals, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Okay. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes to make their presentation, and you be allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Just come forward. Please state your name, please.
My name is DJ Woodson.
And where do you live?
Nashville, Tennessee, Titus Young Real Estate Development.
Okay.
Obviously, this is my project working on. I worked with the Planning Department for a few months back and forth on this to present what you see here, and made sure that it met all the critical requirements that they kept telling me that I should meet in terms of how the units should look and how they should be positioned, and they moved some units from the back and up to the front, and so we could create this walkable and user-friendly site. And so, my first time doing this, so I don't know too much to say, but I just --
Your fact.
Trying to create a project over there in West Nashville in that neighborhood center, so.
Okay. Any questions from the Commissioners? You be allowed two minutes for rebuttal after anyone speaking in opposition has spoken. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in support? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Please come forward to the microphone.
Hello, my name's Ricky Miller. I'm president of the Robertson Neighborhood Association, and I was asked to help on this project. There are some of the projects that I haven't got involved with, or some of them I've voted for and supported, and some of them I've been against. This project, the neighbors asked me for my help on it. It doesn't really fit. We've got single-family houses across the street from this. There are apartments, and there's one development on SP that was passed a little while back, that's 22 thing, but it's on the other side of apartments. Like I say, I don't really feel this fits our neighborhood, and I've asked Mr. Woodson to come to our neighborhood meeting next week and talk to the neighbors and see what their opinion is on it. Like I say, from what I've done, I've been doing this for about seven months now with support of our outgoing councilperson and the council electees through all this stuff, and they've attended the meetings, so they've heard what the neighbors expect. We do have somebody from Planning coming to our next meeting to try to tell us what y'all expect out of us and what we're looking for in West Nashville. There's a lot of, I guess, land that's available in West Nashville that is just empty lots, and there are some frame houses that need to be replaced. This house that this development's going on is a nice ranch rock house that, you know, getting demolished for 13 units, and we've got three exits out of our neighborhood. Robertson Road, James Avenue, and American Road. It's only three exits we have. If you've ever been on Robertson Road at about 9:00 in the morning, you are not coming towards downtown. You know, we're trying to infill the best we can with a reasonable amount of time and try to get bus routes and stuff in there, and like I say, you know, we want to -- we know development's coming, we're open to development, but we do wish that people would come to us and talk to us about what they're planning before they bring it before y'all and just say that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone, if you wish to speak to the commission, please line up to the microphone.
I'm Teresa Meek, neighbor in the -- I live up the street from this. The main thing we have against it is you're putting 13 homes into one family lot. Like Ricky said, it fits none of the way our houses look. They're all ranch bricks. These are three stories. There's no house on our street that's three stories. They've got a driveway, but they're only allowing five visitor parkings for 13 units. That's a little ridiculous for what we feel. They're sitting right up on the street. They're not -- every house on our road sits off the street. These are right on it, and this so-called sidewalk is only in front of that property. It's not extending anywhere past that. This is a very busy section of this road. There, on the other side, is a market, and it is always crowded there, especially Fridays when guys are getting their paychecks cashed there. This is a very crazy area for them to put 13 homes in this little bitty plot of land. So I guess that's what we feel, that you could get it smaller. We were all for getting the growth in there and getting some of the crappy houses out, but this is a little much for our neighborhood. So please work with us and downsize, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hey, I'm Mary Carolyn Roberts, and as you know, I'm the newly elected Metro Council person for this district, and I want to say that I have, because of the runoff, and actually one of my first very much needed vacations, the last week I've been out of town, I know very little about this project. The little I do know about it is my constituents are upset. So I would ask that we have more meetings and that we get to talk more with not just the developer, but with the neighborhood before we make any decisions. Thank you.
Would you like for it to be deferred?
Yes, sir, I sure would. Thank you.
Applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal, and there's been a request that it be deferred, but that would be your decision whether it be deferred or not, whether we would vote on it today.
Sorry, how's that work? Sorry.
Well, the council lady's asking it be deferred, give more time so you can talk to the community, but that's your decision. If you say you don't want it deferred, then we will go ahead and vote on it today.
Yeah, I wish that it wouldn't be deferred. I reached out to Councilwoman Roberts, and I reached out to the last council, and anybody who would take a listen. Spent months planning this project with the Planning Department and really met the goals. I too saw the neighborhood across the street and said, "Well, they got single-family homes across the street, why can't I build it?" And they said, "This is not in the plan for Nashville Next, and it's not in the T4 district." You know, this isn't more liable for what the plan is for the area, to have the houses up to the street with the sidewalks and to have that. And so I have parking closer to the front entrance. They said, "No, let's move it to the back because it doesn't fit with the T4 Neighborhood Center plan." And so, you know, 13 homes coming to an area doesn't seem too arduous, they're building, and I think we probably could have got more if we wanted to push the density like some other places are, and we met the parking requirements.
We'll defer it, and then you give it to the council lady, and she'll have some public hearings and, you know, with the community, community meetings, and try to work out a solution between you and the community, so.
Are you saying we will defer it?
We will defer it, yes. Well, there'll be a motion to defer, and then we'll be up to Commissioners whether they vote to defer it or not, but we'll let you know when.
Does it have to be deferred, sir?
Chairman, no.
Doesn't have to be. We can go ahead and vote on it today if you wish.
I'd like to ask Mr. Chairman if I could maybe make a stab at an explanatory process sort of comment on this. Sounds like from the hearing that you've done a lot of what the staff recommended and that we like to see, actually. So I understand your dilemma. But I'm, as a former councilmember, I'm uniquely aware that when you face planning and zoning issues your first month in office, and you have organized neighbors who are very interested in the future, that you really, I think, in terms of the political aspects of this, it would make more sense for all of the folks here in your best interest to kind of work on it some more, because the elected official, whatever our recommendation, generally, it's up to that elected official in terms of taking it further and making a recommendation to the council which she's elected to. So to me, it would be in everyone's best interest to defer, even those of us who might think that the plan has some very good aspects. That's just, I mean, the process is that we recommend the council decides, because zoning itself is a legislative act, we only recommend on zoning. So that's just my thought as to why we might be considering to vote for it for all, even if you had hopes of going forward.
Well, it's no problem. Just a quick question on zoning, then. The majority of my property is on CS, is that correct? That is correct, my client?
Right.
Which means?
That there is CS zoning on the front of the property.
The majority of it, probably 80% of it, right? So I guess that essentially means I can also do multifamily then, right?
No, I don't, I don't believe that you can.
I don't believe. Crowley Drive is a collector. You could only do multifamily if it was a collector road, so you could do commercial, but not multifamily.
Okay. I guess I defer, Mr. Chairman.
You okay to defer it?
I don't think I have a choice, sir.
Well, you do have a choice, but I think that the, the best of the choices to defer it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not trying to make anybody's enemy, so we'll defer.
Who would defer? One meeting?
Sorry.
One meeting, okay.
Because if I say, "No, I don't defer," then you guys vote.
Let me ask the council lady to come back up and see how much time she needs to -- if you're going to have a community meeting on this, how much time? We defer it one meeting, which would be October 22nd, we defer it to the first meeting in November?
If you could give us until middle November, I think that we could pretty much come to a conclusion.
Middle of November.
We could, okay, so here's the issue. We have two different meetings that we need to have coordinated, and I don't think I have time to get the next one and the following one together that quickly. Is that, do you feel like I should give less time? Is that what you're recommending?
Well, I would recommend deferring to November, first meeting in November gives you four weeks.
Perfect. I'm happy with that. That's great. Is that working for you?
I'm happy with whatever the council wants.
I love when Matt talks like that.
That is, thank you.
That's great.
Now, the public hearing closed, and the Commissioners will now vote. Is there a motion? Will we defer two meetings? Is that what that is?
Okay, that's what my motion is, defer two meetings.
Motion second to defer two meetings, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So be deferred until the first meeting. What is the date in?
November 12th, I believe.
Okay.
November 12th, so.
That's perfect. That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Get ready for item number five.
My name's Carrie Logan. This is item number five on your agenda. This is a request to rezone from IWD to MULA, and staff recommends approval. The current zoning is IWD, which would allow various light industrial and warehousing uses. However, there are two buildings situated on the property that are being used for residential units. The policies on the property are conservation and urban mixed-use neighborhood, and the conservation policy includes a small amount of floodplain along the front of the property and some steep slopes towards the rear of the property. This is T4 conservation, so the guidance for preserving the conservation area is based on the T4 transect and whether they have already been disturbed or not. The area between the two buildings has been disturbed where the conservation policy is shown, and a retaining wall has been placed there for parking. This request supports a variety of critical planning goals, including supporting a variety of transportation options. There is a, the Midtown Connector runs down Lewis Street in front of this property, and this rezoning would allow for redevelopment consistent with the policy, including residential, commercial, and office uses, though in the short term it is proposed for residential uses in the existing building. And staff recommends approval.
Okay, change. Item's open for the public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes to make their presentation. You can hold them back for rebuttal if you'd like.
I'm Rusty Lawrence with Urban Housing Solutions, and there's really not much to add because that was a good presentation. What we're trying to do is we're trying to increase the affordable housing stock of Nashville, which is a pretty critical need. The property now has 14 units on it that I think are legally zoned for 11, and we're trying to take it back to its original design, which included 21-bedroom units. That fits the model that we're trying to, or the program that we're trying to establish with this property. It builds on the success of a property that's about a half a mile away on the top of Garden Street, which is a property that involves the Vanderbilt Divinity School, adults with developmental disabilities, and having one-bedroom units is actually the one, is the way that this should go. So I don't think there's much more to add to that.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone. State your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Doris and I own property on Creek Street. We have a problem with every time it rains, we get tons of water down there. And I am concerned that with the idea of the runoff ponds, they really don't work. They don't slow much water down nor do they retain anything. We've just had a wake-up call on corner of Geyser and Industry Street. And that situation down there on top of the hill, I believe the gentleman addressed right there, is going to cause even more water and nothing's going to slow it down. Water seeks its own level and if it comes off that hill, it's not going to seek it. Now, over on the project that we're talking about today, that same water finds its way down to Creek Street. You may not think that it does, but it does. There's been some hope for some time that we could get some development down there in that bottom, but I don't think it's going to come as long as it's in that floodplain down there. However, there's some chap has been putting some goats down there and I'd love to meet him because I'd give him plenty of room to graze them goats because we've got plenty of turf down there that needs cleaned up. But now that's our problem down there. And the runoff ponds as they're now designed just does not work. They don't work like they do in California and I hate to use that word because I don't like anything comes out of California. But anyway, runoff ponds in California work. And it's the way they allow the amount of water through them. But anyway, that being the case, those of us up there that are faced with this problem every time it rains would like to see some relief. Not fighting the project, but we'd like some changes on them runoff ponds. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
The only thing that I can add to that is that it is our design to use pervious concrete. And so the runoff that I think that Bill is talking about, hopefully a bunch of it will be absorbed through the pervious concrete in the parking lot. But I did want to add that we started, we started working in this area about four years ago and we identified that some of the problems, some of the crime and some of the randomness of the neighborhood was coming from the multifamily units. And so what we tried to do was to purchase as many of the multifamily units as we could. And then we provide pretty intense management and we screen our residents very thoroughly so that no one there that has a criminal record can come. So we ended up buying seven of the other multifamily properties. This was one that was unavailable at the time. It only leaves one other one at the very far end of Lewis Street. And so this is kind of a, one further step toward the redevelopment of that area.
Thank you. Declared the public hearing closed. Order.
If I could ask Steve Mischuh from Metro Water Services to just answer a quick question.
How can I help you today?
Hi, Steve. I just wanted to confirm that if this property's redeveloped, that they would be required to meet all stormwater regulations, which would include water quality and potentially quantity, dealing with both quality and quantity.
Yes, we'll make sure that whatever gets developed here will meet our requirements. And if they're proposing some LID features like pervious pavement that will help infiltrate some water versus maybe a traditional detention pond that will hold back water and then release it. So, you know, if the gentleman's a little bit skeptical about detention ponds, they work in its purpose, but they don't do necessarily like LID features like pervious pavement and rain gardens. But I don't want to give the homeowner any false hope that this project is going to do anything that's going to significantly help or affect him negatively. Unfortunately, Creek Street is in the Browns Creek floodway and they're just going to get a lot of water in the floodway. So this site, whether they develop it with all pavement or whether they make it all a bi-retention area, I don't think it's going to help this gentleman out.
And either way, they'll have to meet your stormwater regulations.
Either way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For those of you who don't know, Urban Housing Solutions provides a great service for our city. They manage their properties really well. They, and I think most of their properties provide housing for some of our very lowest-income folks and they do a great job at it. So I'm excited about their acquisition of this property and plan to support it.
Mr. Doris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doris and I had a little informal discussion beforehand. We've known each other a long time and we share a certain skepticism about engineering sometimes, having, from our experience, nothing personal, Mr. Mischuh, but it sometimes doesn't work out in practice as well as we would hope or as it sometimes looks. But I gather from what you've said, Steve, that as usual, this doesn't, it doesn't necessarily help, but it shouldn't hurt if they build it to your specifications and with the features that Mr. Lawrence suggested.
You're absolutely correct. Like I said, I think the very critical thing here is that we're talking about the Browns Creek floodway and not too much further beyond here will become, you know, getting very close to like Mill Creek where Mill Creek comes into the Cumberland also. This Browns Creek is just really flashy and the floodway over here is just wide. Luckily for this development, the floodway doesn't encroach onto this development.
All right. Thank you. Well, Hunter stated my thoughts as well. One of our more pressing problems obviously is housing affordability and Urban Housing Solutions has been working hard at that for many years. The problem is it just hasn't had enough opportunities and no one group could fix that problem. But their work over the last 15 or 20 years has been very positive for this city in terms of needs, meeting needs and having a variety of housing available. So I'll be supporting this proposal.
William?
To echo the previous comments from my fellow Commissioners, obviously affordable and attainable housing is something that's really important to Nashville and great to see that this is something that's going to address that problem. But obviously, the concern with that would be what the opponent had to say was whether this was going to come in and actually negatively affect the properties that were already there. But after listening to stormwater, it doesn't seem like that's the case. Obviously, there are going to be problems in this area that this development won't necessarily help, but it will not be, from what I understand, adversely affecting the property. So I would be also in support.
Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
No comments.
Is there a motion?
Move we approve staff recommendation.
Motion second, approve with staff recommendations. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hunter, you got anything from the historic? Okay. Any other comments from any of the Commissioners? Do we stand adjourned?